Thank you. Welcome to the Norwood zoning board meeting of August 6, 2024. This meeting is being recorded by GoToMeeting and also Norwood Community Media. I ask everyone to silence all electronic devices. The format for tonight's hearing will be parties wishing to offer comments and testify matters before the board, please approach and state your name and address for the record. The applicant will address the board and provide evidence and testimony supporting their proposal. Members of the board may ask questions before, during, or after the applicant's presentation. Following comments and questions from the board, we'll open up the meeting, the public hearing to anyone who'd like to speak on this matter. That would include any written comments received. All questions and comments should go through the chair. And following that, the applicant will be given an opportunity to make a final statement, address any concerns that might have arisen, and then the board will consider continuing the public hearing or move to close the public hearing. If they choose to close the public hearing, the board may proceed to deliberate and vote on the proposal. We have one proposal tonight for 403 East Vernon Street. I will read the public notice. Notice hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on August 6, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. on the request of Larry O'Brien, case 24-16, with respect to the property located at 43 East Vernon Street, Norwood, Mass., 02062, in the Central Business Zoning Districts. This hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood. It will also be available for most participation via Google Meet. The application requests a special permit pursuant to zoning bylaws, Sections 3.1.5 Use Regulations and Sections 5.4.4 Increase in Nonconforming of a Nonconforming Structure and Section 6.1.12 Off-Street Parking and Loading Special Permit. The application proposes to convert the subject property from a two-family residential dwelling to a three-unit residential dwelling. There's no change in the building exterior as proposed, only a change of use of the existing space. The subject property is pre-existing nonconforming in a lot area. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence to Norwood Zoning Board shall be considered by the board. Interested parties are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the board. Plans are on file with this application in the office of the Zoning Board of Appeals and may be requested by emailing comdev@norwoodma.gov Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and the advertisement ran on the Norwood Record on July 18th and on July 25th. Okay, the applicant is here. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, sir, and tell us about your proposal.
Lawrence O'Brien. I live at 43 East Vernon Street. And I'm just looking to utilize the property by means of being able to rent a studio apartment. Everything's all preexisting. I believe it meets all the criteria necessary. I did the addition, I think, '06, '08. But it's a beautiful property, and I'm just, you know, getting older, and I'm looking towards the financial help, you know, to be able to rent it. Like I said, I'm just trying to get some relief where I have that option. I think that's pretty much it.
Okay, all right. I'll say, Al, do you want to have any questions for Mr. O'Brien?
I was by there earlier today, the latest pass-by, if you will. There's a lot of clutter, covered vehicles, covered...
One vehicle's covered, and that's because it's a 1983 Chevy Malibu wagon that I just restored, so it's covered. It's a beautiful vehicle.
Taking up one of your parking spaces?
Wonderful, yes.
Is it registered?
It is registered, yeah.
Okay. Kind of jams a place up. Another apartment would be...
Actually, there's only two vehicles there, and my tenant might have been a third. I don't know what you saw. If anything, there were only three vehicles there. I'm hypothetical, of course. You know, my tenant drives a black Honda Accord, I think. That's by the side of the house. If it was there, I don't know. Other than that, if anything, there were two vehicles there. One was covered up to protect it. Other than that, I think everything's neat and in order. Front yard looks like an oasis. It's beautiful. You saw all the flowers, plants, stonework.
Looks like a jungle. Beautiful jungle.
You know, beautiful jungle, thank you. Yeah, front porch.
A lot of time spent there.
I'm waiting for my mason. I did his house last year. I've been waiting for him for the last few months to come in and rewire my landscape. But all in all, it's still nice, but, you know, turns a lot of heads. You know, I get a lot of compliments.
Now the tenant in there, they'll make that even more crowded than it is.
Um, I got like...
That's my opinion.
Nine parking spots. I know all the legwork was done back in '06, '08 when I initially built the property, you know, because it was the same size as the one next door. If you remember, memory insurance was next door to me. If you look like a Norwood guy, I grew up in Norwood, so...
You grew up in Boston.
Yeah, but I've been there since '95, you know, but it's pristine, it's upgraded, it's beautiful. It's, you know, like I said, I have the space. I'd like to utilize it, you know, it would be helpful to be able to bring in that income. I'm a few years away from retirement, hypothetical. My body doesn't break down any more than it has. I need three years ago, I was hip last year, you know. The other one's coming, so they tell me. But needless to say, I'd just like to be able to utilize the property in the best way that I can, you know. But I believe it meets all the criterias, so I was told, you know. I got garages, I got, you know, I have a business that I run, you know. But needless to say, it's a beautiful property, and I'm just looking to utilize a little bit more of it, you know. So, any other questions?
Anything else, Al?
No.
Rachel?
Yeah, thank you. Just looking back through some of the other zoning decisions, it looked like, if I'm following along, there are two units, and also you operate a business out of...
I'm a painter, so I mean, I own a business, I don't operate a business.
Okay, there's not like a separate...
I mean, I have a little office downstairs in the basement.
Okay, so it's not like a separate commercial unit?
No, it's not, nothing like that.
Okay. So it's all going to be an internal renovation to accommodate...
There's nothing even to renovate. Everything's beautiful inside.
Oh, so it's just an issue of the...
The egresses are there. I have a bathroom, I have a kitchen in. It's all set up, I have a porch. Everything's all preexisting.
Okay.
Because back when I built it, I was thinking about this down the road. I might need some help, which is kind of how it's gone.
And what are the bedroom counts in each of the three units?
I mean, in the wayback unit that I rented has a one-bedroom. That's a one-bedroom. It's in the wayback, second floor only.
Okay.
I own the, I'm in the whole front, two-thirds. The middle section is the one that's set up for like a studio apartment. You know, it's probably, I don't, I don't know the sizes. Might be like 24 by 24. It's a real good size.
So when you separately demise that, that will be a studio, so it will be like basically one bedroom?
Yeah, like I said, I have the two egresses that separate from the front and the rear, making it a third entity that's easily accessible, you know.
And then the front apartment, I guess, where you're currently living is a...
The existing house that, when I bought it, was kind of the same as next door, which I lived for a second floor. I'm not going anywhere.
And is, how many bedrooms is this in that front? I'm asking just from the parking.
My front area, I have two bedrooms.
Okay, so it's a two-bedroom, a one-bedroom, and a one-bedroom is the...
The front, it's, it's, on the second floor, it's funky. It's almost like a Motel 8. My buddies were giving me a hard time when I built it. I go, well, I can only go this way, and I can only go that way, so I utilized all of it. But on the front section, for a second floor, second floor, I have two bedrooms and a full bath. And then there's like a middle section, second floor, that's the, that's the studio that I'm looking to utilize, where it's totally separate, two egresses, et cetera, et cetera. So it's, you know, it's perfect for like the right person.
Right.
It's got a beautiful bathroom in it, it's got a kitchen in, it's all set up, pretty much.
And then I saw a couple of plans in here. One's proposed, I guess the proposed new addition is what has actually, you know, on the ground there now. Is, I guess, is there an as bill?
It was completed in like '08, so it's been...
Yeah.
There's nothing ongoing. It's been preexisting since, you know, I did the whole property over back in '08.
And then I guess the same question on this parking plan from '08. The proposal is to have eight parking spaces with this configuration?
Yeah, there's like more than, you know, it's a little bit of a shuffle because it's a sheer driveway, kind of. So, you know, but everybody accommodates, you know, at least to this point we have.
Yeah, I don't have any other questions.
To be able to get in and out.
Thank you.
She actually touched on more of the questions that I had. One of the things we're asked to consider is circulation, both vehicular and pedestrian.
I'm sorry?
Vehicular, so cars, and then how people would get pedestrian access to the site. Could you just, because I'm not as familiar with the property, you have, if you're going to have three units in here, could you describe to me how someone would access? They have a porch on the front. Is that how you access all three units?
No, the front porch is me.
Okay.
That's me.
Yeah.
As you walk down the driveway?
Yeah.
You'll see there's a, there's a separation there where you can see the egress going up, about the middle of the property.
Okay.
That goes up, that's the common area, I think they call it, it's the big extra wide one when you move, you know, it's big and wide. That goes up in the middle of two units.
Yeah.
And then going all the way down the back would be how my, my other tenant gets in her apartment, you know, so she's got the two egresses. And then the middle section has two egresses as well.
And so what you're describing as the common area at the center is what you're asking to convert into a new?
Yeah, if, looking at it, I don't know how that's displayed, but it's, it's like the middle third section. I describe it as three sections. So it's like the middle section, because the second, second floor is all livable space. First floor is garage, you know, second and third section. It's not complicated, but it does sound complicated.
And then I said one other question. I don't know if you happen to know the age of the original house?
Actually, I don't.
Okay.
But I know everything can done. Like I said, I bought it in '95, and I did the whole thing. It was ready for bulldozer back then, but cranked it up, put an I-beam in, did it over back then, and then in '08, '06, I did the whole shoot match.
So the portion on these plans that you submitted, that's annotated as number 43? Oh, please, Sue.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the original portion, and then this was an addition that you did?
Yeah, the original was like, was like 26 by 24. It was like, the size of it was like a double garage initially.
Okay.
And then I did what I could with it to utilize it as best I could. But...
Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Excellent. Matt?
I only had one question.
Sure.
It's really about the, about the traffic and the parking. I mean, the driveway seems extremely narrow.
Yeah, it's 20 feet, so it's 10 and 10.
So 10 is yours, and 10 is your neighbor?
10 and 10, yeah, yeah.
Your neighbor?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, and so, you know, getting in and out, backing in and backing out, and queuing up, I mean, that's, to me, that's...
Yeah, it's, it's always worked to this point, you know. One more vehicle, will it add something potentially? You know? I mean, there's plenty of space, but like I said, it's the sliding in and out. Maybe some coordinating, like when you have to plow. Imagine that? The driveway's like 120 feet, so I got to coordinate everybody moving, and, you know, I got multiple vehicles, you know, coordinating the plow guy.
Yeah, I didn't get to the back of the site, so I couldn't see what the, what the area looks like.
Yeah, I understand, yeah. Because they put up a fence, the guy that bought that property next door a few years ago put up a fence, which, you know, made it a little more difficult, you know, because previous, the previous guy, when I bought the place, went over, introduced himself, everything's peachy, you know, and you just were good neighbors. And then the person that came in, for whatever their reason, they, you know...
Some people say you make good neighbors.
Yeah, because I used to pull out back in, and it used to be real accessible. And then, but now it's just like, oh, well, what can you do?
Yeah.
You know, make the best of it.
Yeah.
You know, it's a great spot, great location. I'm not going anywhere. I love it there, you know?
And, and just curious, what was, what was, what prompted the denial in the past?
Um, I don't even know, to be honest with you. I know it was a three to two. It was when I did the property, and I knew Jack Perry was on the board back then, the architect, he did some work on my property. Mrs. Kent, who I knew from her son, I graduated in '78. I have no clue. I knew it met the criteria, for whatever reason they didn't allow it, I have no idea. But back then, I just figured, let's just go through the process, get it done, so if and when I ever want to use it, I'm all set. And now, you know, 20 years later, you know, almost, whatever, it's been 18, 15, 16 years, whatever, now it's like, oh, you know, let's go see if we can't make this work, because, you know, I'm going to probably be in a position where I'm going to need to have it utilized, you know?
And so, present day?
Yeah.
You don't get along with the guy behind you? How about the...
Oh, I get along with everybody.
So any pushback from the, on this?
I haven't heard anything from anybody in reference to, like, this is going out in the, in the bullet center, or whatever it was. I know all my neighbors, the ones in the back, I know well, you know, the plumber across the street, the vader across, diagonal there, Headley, I know everybody. Like I said, I've been there since '95. Like I said, a little bit of a shuffle, worst-case scenario, worst-case scenario, you know. Who knows? Maybe they just have a bike.
Yeah.
They get lucky. You know, they commute, you know? It's a perfect location.
I'm good, Mike.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Can I throw one more, Charlie?
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
You mentioned the previous visits to the board. You had a 4-0 vote on one.
I only, I was only aware of one vote back in like '08 when I built the property.
And the other one was four to one?
I heard it was three to one.
Denied. So, you know, what's the change from them to now as to the decisions? Their decisions?
I don't know why they didn't just let it, you know, go back then. It wasn't, I have no clue. I can't say why someone said, nah, I don't think so, versus, yeah, it's a beautiful property, why not, would be the problem. I don't see the problem.
I don't think they approached it like that, all right.
Yeah, I honestly couldn't tell you.
Yeah, okay.
But like I said, it was odd, because I happened to go...
You didn't go to the board, though?
I'm sorry?
You did go to the board.
From what I can recall, it was 18 years ago, you know?
I'm recording, from what I saw here.
I think it was, yeah, I'm just, I just remember I went through the process.
Okay.
Like, is it fresh in my memory? Absolutely not. But I do know Jack Perry, he did some work on the architectural plans. I knew he was on it.
And sat on the board?
Yeah, I believe him and Mrs. Kent were both on it. That was my general understanding, again. I don't know if somebody told me they were on it, or, you know.
So they would have had to recuse themselves.
I found it kind of odd, but...
But he did your architectural work too, though, and he sat on it?
But just knowing somebody, or he had some reference, I don't know, for some windows, glass.
Just to get to the votes, okay? In 2004, you were before the Board of Appeals?
Oh, in '04.
And the vote was four to zero, variance denied. In 2008, you went back to the Board of Appeals, and the vote was denied four to one, and John Perry voted to deny.
But in, in 2004, the board granted a special permit for the multifamily use and denied a variance request for a waiver of the setback.
Okay.
Yeah, because I don't even remember no fourth thing. That was before I even...
And that never get filed, though, right? Is that what you said in your email to us? It'll get thrown out?
Yeah, I don't even remember no...
Al, anything else?
Yeah, that'll do it, Mr. Chairman.
I have the same concerns about the parking. You know, this kicks over to us because there's no site plan review by the, by the planning board, and when you look at the parking design, the typical parking dimensions, it doesn't meet any of those. But one of the requirements, seven or more parking spots, you cannot enter or exit by backing out. So it causes a dilemma, for me, when how do we, how do we, it's very tight there.
Oh, I know, yeah, I know.
If you have someone that's in your parking spot one, who wants to get out, that person has to wake up eight, seven, six, and five to get out. I mean, that could be a lot of cars backing up early in the morning, you know, disturbing the neighborhood. Is it more detrimental? I, I have a trouble with the parking. I'll be perfectly honest with you.
Yeah, no, I appreciate your honesty. Like I said, I got the two spots next to the house. I pull in at an angle, so I get in and out easily in front of my tenant, and like I said, putting one more car there, you know, does it add some type of congestion? You can't dispute that, you know? But if you got everybody on the same page, within reason, which, you know, I would expect, but I'm optimistic, you know? Again, maybe I get lucky and they ride a bike. I don't know.
Maybe you just, maybe you just rent them, say they have no parking?
Well, if that's an option, then you got the town parking. I mean, there's plenty of that around.
The street parking's allowed.
So I could always, if that's an option that I have, where, you know, I can rent without allowing them to have a parking spot, if that, you know, allows me the freedom, you know, I don't, I don't know how that works.
I'm trying to get over that. Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah, that's all, I appreciate it.
Yep, go ahead, Joan, sorry.
Just to make sure I'm reading this correctly, I believe he has two one-bedroom units and one two-bedroom units, which to me, that totals up to five parking spots required. He's showing more than that.
Right.
So, looking at...
He should be showing, he has the backing.
Right, so if he only needs five spots, if we eliminate space six, seven, and eight, I think that might be, from, you know, dimensionally, I don't know if this meets, because we're missing some of that information on this plan. I think that's what Shannon's question was after, was determining the number.
But, yeah.
Rachel. Oh, sorry, Rachel, sorry. But that's exactly what I was going for.
Yeah, no, that's, that is true in regards to the, I think it's for each bedroom, but isn't it for each bedroom, three parking spots?
It's, it's three parking spaces per dwelling unit having more than one bedroom.
So, so that means that would be six for the two-bedroom? Am I doing that correctly?
It's per, per dwelling unit, not per bedroom.
It's a 1.3.
Is the studio considered a one-bedroom?
Oh, must be.
I would imagine, yeah. Yeah.
So is that a total four bedrooms, is that what it's at?
I think it's based on the number of bedrooms per unit, not the total of the entire building. Yeah.
Five.
Right, so each, each studio, if you consider it a one-bedroom, would each require one spot?
Yeah, if it was, one in the apartment, one in the studio, that'd be two.
And then, and then yours would trigger three.
And then two for me, so that's four total?
So, so...
That's the way I have it.
By the, by the rules, it's three for you.
Oh, and three?
Two bedrooms, it's three.
I don't know where my third bedroom is. I must say two.
No, no, it's, it's the car.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Apply two.
No, like I said, I mean, in worst-case scenario, would it be challenging? Worst-case, you know?
Either way, it's going to be challenging.
Yeah, no, I get it.
Okay, thank you, sir. We're going to just open up, see if anyone's here in front of the public.
You guys good?
If they'd like to speak, yeah, you can just have a seat. We might have you back up here.
That's all right.
Don't go far.
Nope.
Is there anyone here on GoToMeeting that'd like to speak on this proposal?
It doesn't look like they're trying to speak.
Okay. I see none here in the audience, and hearing from no one on the GoToMeeting.
Would you like a motion to close the hearing, sir?
Yeah, unless there's any more questions for the applicant? No? No? Yes, so I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Seconded by Al. Seconded by Matt. Matt? To close the public hearing?
Seconded.
Yep. You're voting yes, yep. Come in.
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Al? Yes. Okay, the public hearing is closed. What are the thoughts and wishes of the board? Matt, start with you on the left.
Yeah, I think, you know, clearly, the driveway and the parking is an issue, but I don't see it as an impediment to, to move it forward, so...
Okay.
I'm in support.
Janine?
I think considering if it's a, if the requirement truly is five spaces, I'd be more comfortable. I would prefer to have more information in terms of the dimension on the, on the parking itself.
Okay, we can ask for a parking plan. If that's your request, I'll have it down linked over here. Anything else you want?
Nope, that's all.
Yeah. Rachel?
I guess I'm, I'm just not following the relief requested for parking because only five is required. Is the, is the question here a dimensional relief on parking specifically? Because by my count...
It's because there's 6.1.12, that is...
Yeah, 6, 6.112 allows...
Special...
Special permits.
Yeah. When they're looking for a use or structure requires plan review from the plan, but maybe such is not detrimental to the neighborhood. So I guess the relief they're seeking, is this relief going to result in substantial detriment to the neighborhood?
Well, I think the way I read it is the, the board may, by special permit, authorize a deviation from the parking or voting requirements of the Section 6.1.
Yep.
I'm just not seeing that we need a deviation from the requirements because by my count, only five spaces are required?
Well, we need them in the dimensions, 6.1.0.
Oh, the dimensions are what?
It doesn't meet any of the dimensions.
Okay, so I guess I'm having a hard time then because the dimensions of the individual spaces are not identified on this plan.
Right.
Okay.
And it's, it's only 10 feet, and it says stall, stall width parallel to the aisle should be 12 feet. I mean, but significantly missing the parking dimensions in feet, and it is hard to see without a parking plan. We certainly can ask the applicant to provide one before we vote on this, if, so we see it. You know, I would recommend, I'll speak to it now, that we remove parking spaces seven and eight, and a sign be put up that there's no parking there, and that way vehicles will be able to get out if they have to get out, because to Julian's point, it's only required to have five. So those should be removed, and then we would be, might, just how I feel about it, because I think if something bad happens there, someone has to yell, what if that person, number one, has to get to the, to the hospital and can't get an ambulance or something? I mean, it's really tight, tight, tight. So I would look at it that way, if we also had a parking plan, with those removed and a sign on the building showing no parking, so that, that'll leave access for, so six, seven, and eight would be removed, and that would allow everyone to get out. Just my thoughts on it.
Yeah, that makes sense, and because we would have the numbers, and then it would just be relief on the dimension for number five.
Yeah, well, yes, number five, and actually all of them, because of, it's only a 10-feet-wide driveway, but I would be comfortable doing something like that. I don't know how you feel about that, Al.
My problem with saying shut off, what was it, number seven and eight? The problem is now, who's enforcing that?
Well, we can make sure there's a sign put up there, and it's part of the, is part of the special permit, and if we see cars there, we can call the building inspector and say, under our special permit, there was no parking allowed in that spot, and he can be cited for it.
I just don't see making it the building inspector's duty, and all of a sudden, I think it's, the situation doesn't warrant the additional parking for the layout of the land. And I think that's probably why, in the past, the denies, denials became prevalent here. And I, I'm in favor, I'm not in favor of doing anything differently than previously. This, it just, it's congestion, this building next door on Central Street, the additional units coming in there, you can't just say, well, there's public parking across the street behind Day Street Sport or the town lot. It's congestion, more congestion in the downtown area on the side streets. It's not necessary, and it's our job to keep this town free flowing.
Yeah, the previous vote in 2008 said the board has previously granted a permit for two-family use and concludes that a three-family use will be overly dense for the area considering parking and other factors. So that, that was their vote, which was four to one.
Well, I like the notion, Mike, of use of a parking plan and the elimination of spaces, and at the end of the day, if we need to, we just say, you know, rent it without parking.
I'm sorry, can you just repeat that last? I didn't quite catch what you said.
I said I like the notion of requiring a parking plan and the elimination of two or three spaces, and at the end of the day, if we're still not comfortable, the requirement could be that you do not rent it with parking.
Yeah, the other thing I was thinking, too, is if we don't like any of these in the driveway area granting relief to reduce the number of parking by one, so that there's only four, so basically, one vehicle for each of the two one-bedrooms, and two for the two-bedroom would be another mechanism for relief.
Okay, Julian, anything?
Nope.
So I, I think the sense is we want to see a, a parking plan from a certified engineer
or land surveyor that will indicate obviously, if you want, before you want to eliminate it altogether out of the, out of the driveway?
I don't feel strongly about one or the other. I think it would probably be put to the proponent to make a proposal and demonstrate it on the plan to persuade us to approve whatever the specific proposal would be.
Okay. Okay, Mr. O'Brien, so certainly we're not going to move forward with what's been presented us to hear this evening. We can table it to allow you to provide a parking plan that shows the actual dimensions of the driveway, and if you do have any easement rights across your neighbors, falling insurance there, now formally of, that might be helpful. If there isn't, you know, we can't, we can't vote on allowing you to cross someone else's property. So if you could provide us with those dimensions and show us just two plans, one with just the four garage parking spots, and then one with six, seven, and eight removed, and showing signage that no parking, no blocking, no blocking, no parking in the alleyway except the... the spot in the back. So we can certainly table that and allow you to provide that for us, and, and have you come back and see if that's acceptable to the board at the time.
So I need to see someone that has to do a layout, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, 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 it has to be a certified.
There was, there was nothing in the previous...
There is here, yeah.
Oh, there is something previous?
This was denied, so obviously, the Board of Appeals at that time...
They didn't, right, they weren't too happy with it.
They, they, they weren't happy with it either.
Yeah.
So, to, to the parking plan that we have, um, it should show the dimensions of what each parking space measures, as, as well as where they are.
It should show the, the length of the driveway, and the, and the, obviously, it's even hard, you know, everyone's been lie there, even hard backing out of spot number one and two.
I know, the fence jammed me up, but still.
Yeah.
Would manage one more vehicle, would, would make it impossible to function, you know?
Well, it brings, it brings us all the way back to two thousand and eight. We're kind of in the same position...
Yeah.
As the board there that said, "This will be more detrimental to the neighborhood," and the board felt four to one on that.
Yeah, I just find one car shouldn't upset the balance of Noah's Center.
It's not about the one car. This was denied in two thousand and eight. You presented us the same plan, and asked us to prove something that's been denied by a previous board, and it is more detrimental to the neighborhood if you have four cars blocking that driveway. If one or two has to get out, all of those cars have to move at that time, and to me, that's more detrimental to your neighbors.
Yeah.
I don't know how the other members feel. I'm just telling you, that's how I feel.
No, I understand you, I understand your point.
But, you know, we can give you an opportunity, if we vote tonight...
Yeah.
I think it'll get denied, and you cannot go forward for two years, or we can vote to table it, and you can provide us with the, uh, the certified parking plan.
What about a clause with no parking with the tenant?
I'd rather see a parking plan altogether. We need to know what the widths are of everything like that.
I just, I'm having trouble even like identifying what, how we should scope any relief, because we don't know what we're...
Right.
What dimensional relief. I wasn't appreciating that, because it's not on the plan, that these are deficient from the width requirements, so I think we need that detail...
I agree.
...in order to even consider it. But, yeah, I mean, I, I will say, I don't feel obligated to maintain the same discretion of a prior board, um, and the proponent is, you know, authorized and permitted to make new applications, um, but, I mean, certainly a persuasive voice for our consideration as well. Uh, but I think we, we don't have the information even to grant the request of relief if we wanted to, because we wouldn't know how to identify that.
Frame, frame the decision.
Yeah.
I agree. So if that's acceptable to you, we can table it, and you can come by, come back, uh, showing the dimensions of the parking spots, and, you know, according, if you can meet the requirements, but if you can't, just show us what's there now, the width of the driveway, and there are turnaround ratios that, that, and aisle widths, and obviously, we'll be asking, you'll be asking for us to grant relief on that, and to Rachel's point, we have to draft a decision on how much of a ver, of special permit are we exceeding, what the dimensional requirements are.
As long as I understand what I have to do, I'll go give it a shot and...
Okay.
Come back with, you know, something that I guess shows you guys that something can